The Putnam County School District Board Meeting is now officially called to order at 3:30 PM on Tuesday, 12/12/23. We thank you all for joining us, for coming, and for all of our young people that are here to be rewarded for your efforts, and to all the parents for your support of your child, making sure that they understand that education is important, and for all of the teachers that work with them. As a matter of fact, for all of us, everybody having a hand in these fine young people that we were recognized today. Our invocation will be done by Mr. Phil Leary and Mr. David Buckles will do the pledge of allegiance in the order of Mr. Buckles first, and then Mr. Leary, and we will get into the business of why we're here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and for all the opportunities that we have.
Yes.
For the many blessings that you had given us and for your guidance as we move through this meeting, please allow us your wisdom and strength as we make important decisions.
Yes.
Thank you for all these students and parents and administration and staff that are here today and all the hard work we do. And as we move into this holiday season, let us remember that it's all in the name of your Son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Mr. Leary. Ready. Ready. Okay. At this time, we will have our presentations. We have three that own the agenda. The first one will be our Spring 2023 Testing. We're in, our students made perfect scores by Mrs. Renee Lamuro.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And this is a good problem to have, not enough seats for, in my opinion.
You're right.
I say this every time we do this. I thank the good Lord that I didn't have to pass this test when I was in school, much less make a perfect score, because there are a whole bunch of tests our students take, and to make a perfect score is absolutely a huge achievement. And we need to recognize everybody who plays a part in that, from parents, grandparents, guardians, teachers, teaching assistants, principals, and most importantly, our students who do the work. So I thank everybody for their efforts that they put into our students. And I'm going to have Ms. France come up here with us, and she's going to call names. And how we will do this is we will call a name, and we'll call all the names for the school, and then if Ms. Gileard and Superintendent Surtis, see if you'll come down, and we'll take a picture by school. Okay? And so how these are organized is by where the student took the test in the spring. So some of us have transitioned to a high school, a junior, senior high, but it's still going to be with where they were in sixth grade or where they were in the spring when they took it. So that's how they're going to be called in that order. Okay?
And if the school administrator is here too, if you would like to come up with your students, you can, please. All right, we're going to start with Browning Pierce Elementary School, and we would like to congratulate Benjamin Bumgartel for the Grade Four Fast Math Assessment, perfect Gabriel Lopez Martinez for the Grade Four Fast Mathematics Assessment, perfect score. And Brady Pinkerton, who had a perfect score on the Grade Four Fast ELA and math assessment last year. Our next school is Crescent City Junior/Senior High School. Congratulations to Carlos Aguilera for a perfect score on the Grade Eight Fast Math Gabriela Gonzalez with a perfect score on the Grade Eight Fast Math Assessment. Tiafalo Nunez Santos with a perfect score on the Civics EOC Assessment and the Grade Nathaniel Perez with a perfect score on the Grade Eight Fast Math Assessment. You guys had a great teacher. Justin Rigdon with a perfect score on Civics EOC Assessment. And Isabella Wingfield with a perfect score on the Fast Eight Grade Math Assessment. Our next school is James A. Long, and we would like to congratulate Liam Bates for a perfect score on the Grade Five Fast ELA Assessment. From Kelly Smith Elementary School, Branson Moore, who has a perfect score on the Grade Six Fast Math Assessment. Ada Lynn Rigdon, who has a perfect score on the Grade Four Fast Math Assessment. Aiden Sheridan with a perfect score on the Grade Four Fast Math Assessment. And Kayden Traxler with a perfect score on the Grade Six Fast ELA Reading Assessment.
Kayden, you tell your grandpa I don't remember him getting any academic awards.
From the Mellon Learning Center, we have Israel Coring, who made a perfect score on the U.S. History EOC Assessment. Our next group is from Melrose, Mariella Chapini, from making a perfect score on the Grade Four Fast Math Assessment. Jeremiah Hall with the Grade Four Fast Math Assessment, perfect score. James Marini with a perfect score on the Grade Five Statewide Science Assessment. And Sabrina Massey, who made a perfect score on the Grade Five Math Assessment and the From Middleton Burney Elementary School, we have a perfect score from Tiana Ash for the Grade Five Science Assessment. And Travis Walters-Brown, also for the Grade Five Science Assessment. From Aquila, Jackson Carson for a perfect score on the Grade Four Fast Math Assessment. Chloe Narvise with the perfect score for the Grade Five Science Assessment. And Nicholas Penta with a perfect score on the Grade Five Fast Math Assessment. From Palaca Junior/Senior High School, Jasmine Bennett with a perfect score on the Civics From Putnam Virtual, Wade Seebacher with a perfect score on the U.S. History EOC. From QI Roberts, we have Michaela Campbell with a perfect score on the Grade Eight Fast Brandon Day with a perfect score on the Grade Ten Fast ELA Assessment. Adriana Harris with a perfect score on the Grade Eight Fast Mathematics Assessment. Avril Wilson with a perfect score on the Grade Ten Fast ELA. And Bryce Wimberly with a perfect score on the Grade Eight Fast Math. From Jenkins Elementary School, we have Bruce Privat, who made a perfect score on the Grade Six Fast ELA Reading Assessment and the Grade Six Fast Math Assessment. And from the Children's Reading Center, we have Fox Edwards, who made a perfect score on the Science Assessment in Grade Five. And Patrick Robertson II, who made a perfect score on the Grade Four Fast Math Assessment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, we want to congratulate all of our students that worked hard with the perfect scores in some, in two areas. You make us look good, and we appreciate that. And we're going to challenge you, as our superintendent would, that once you're said and done and you've graduated from college, come back home to Putnam County and work and serve in these positions that are here. Again, let's give them all a round of applause.
Madam Chair, can I interrupt just a minute?
Yes, sir.
Again, I want to express our extreme pride in all the work that everybody did, and I know our grades came out yesterday, but this is what I'm really proud of, is students who have really gone above and beyond and really represent the best of what's going on. So I'm very proud of that. Also, I didn't know if you wanted, if anyone wanted to exit. I know a lot of them came for this.
I was going to, after you finished.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure.
No, that's okay.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. At this time, for those parents and students, you may leave, and we'll just wait until you have exited. Thank you again.
If you want to leave.
And we're in traveling mercy. You can stay if you want to.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Didn't mean to sow your thunder.
No, 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 no. Because sometimes I don't remember. This time I did, so it's going to work out.
It's probably the children who are thanking you.
Yes. Hey, I know they're going to be treated. Somebody who's stopping by their favorite place to eat. Man, had to get it in two days. That's coaching players. She was on Holly's volleyball team.
They'll be taking care of us one day, right? Yeah.
All right, coach.
Congratulations.
And student.
Hey, congratulations, great job today.
Yes, yes.
Hey, Coach. Ms. France.
No, Coach.
We do have a student that just showed up, and we want to recognize that student. So we're going to come down and give them their dues.
Good little baby. I didn't hear a peep on it. I thought, that's a little one.
Yeah, the baby didn't make any.
My word.
Maybe they were asleep in the car seat.
But they never sleep in a public meeting.
Give him a standing ovation, since he doesn't get all the compliments.
And again, congratulations.
Good job.
You're welcome. Mrs. Drew?
Susan, do you mind assisting me, please, ma'am? Can you do that?
At this time, Mrs. Diana Drew, I don't see Mr. Hetstrom. We'll recognize our employees at this time.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm so pleased to be here today. We're going to recognize three very important employees in our district today. And before we do that, I just want to say that not all heroes make the news, especially our school employees, who go above and beyond for students and their care. Today, I want to acknowledge such heroes. We have Heather Bowler from Aquila Elementary School, and as I call your name, if you could We'd also like to recognize Jamie Garcia from Crescent City Junior/Senior High School. And Christina Robinson from Mellon Learning Center. If you guys could bear with me for just a second, I want to tell them a little bit about what happened. Recently, Heather, Jamie, and Christina were contacted by a teacher informing them that a student was experiencing a choking episode, very scary. On arrival at the student's location, they immediately assessed the situation and initiated the Heimlich maneuver. Their quick thinking and swift actions helped ensure a safe outcome for the student and the students. Heather, Jamie, and Christina, on behalf of leadership and a grateful community, thank you for your actions and resilient dedication to the health and safety of our district students. Thank you so, so much.
Three in one month.
Let me tell you something, if it can happen, it will happen. Done long enough.
So the trainings pay off when we send our employees.
Absolutely.
The CPR courses and all of the things that will help to keep our children and other employees as safe as possible. We do thank them. Wow. And Mrs. Drew said it was three in one month. And we're so grateful and thankful to them. All right, at this time, we will have our recognition of our retirees from Mrs. Whitehurst.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I know that this is something that the board has been requesting for a while, and we finally have a method of officially recognizing our retirees at our board meetings, so we want to start with this one moving forward. So I know that some of them will not be able to be here, but we still want to recognize them. We want to recognize Ms. Teresa or Terry Missamore for her service of 32 years and five months, and we do have her resolution that we will get to her. We have Ms. Sharon Harris with 33 years and three months of her service to us, and I think we all know she is truly the mascot of Palaca High School.
Well, we have some stories we can tell.
Sharon, if you'll stay up here, we'll get pictures.
I don't think Sharon's going very far. She gonna probably be around.
And then we have Ms. Karen McCarthy with 35 years and one month of service with the district, and we discussed, and we believe most of those have been at Interlaken Elementary, now Jenkins Elementary in kindergarten. What, pre-K, that's right, pre-K, pre-K ESE. What dedication and service. Thank you.
Thank you all for the service. Every recognition is well deserved, and we just started off with our kids, and we ended up with those that helped to make our kids and mold and shape them. And again, we just say thank you, can't say it enough. All right, we are done with our presentations at this time. So do we have any calls for public comment? Do we get any? Okay, no public comments. At this time, we are ready for the board to act on any items that they would like pull from the consent agenda. Mrs. Holly Pickens, we'll start with you.
I have nothing to pull.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. David Buckles?
I came in several hours earlier, and I came yesterday, and I've got my stuff ready.
Taken care of, all right. Mrs. Linda Wagner?
No, ma'am, I have already had my questions answered. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Phil Leary?
Compliment to staff on outstanding backup information and availability to answer questions, and I don't have anything to pull.
All righty, and we are going to pull item E8. We're pulling item E8, and you will understand when we get to the new business, the superintendent will take care of that. So if I could get a motion?
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented minus, minus E, is it?
Eight. Yes.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. David Buckles that we accept the consent agenda minus item E8, and was seconded by Mrs. Holly Pickens. Any questions? Discussion? Are we ready to vote? All in favor? Let it be known by aye. Aye. Motion carries. We do not have any emergency items. We are now ready for our discussion of new business. We're going to go ahead, Mr. Superintendent, and call you at this time.
Okay.
To share with us in, we'll make that in 1A.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I know each of you received a phone call earlier today, and essentially, our board attorney, Douglas Law Firm, indicated, I had a phone conversation with him yesterday, and he made it, made me aware, made you aware, that there are some conflicts between his law firm and the school district, specifically the school board, and as far as personnel and that type thing. And what I mean by that is, he wants to operate on a very transparent, which I've always, you know, appreciated by Charlie Douglas, and he said in the best interest of both the district and his law firm, again, trying to maintain that transparency and making sure that we're all upfront, he has indicated that he feels it is in the best interest, and again, he's had some opinions also, to discontinue his service, his firm's service for the school board. And again, that is all in good faith, and again, it's because he wants to maintain that clean working relationship, and by doing that, he felt the best way would be to discontinue that, which is in our contract. You know, they can give us notice. And so he's done that, and I told him I would bring that up to the board, and then that will give us time as a district to discuss next steps as far as, you know, bringing on another firm or another individual, whatever the case might be, and, you know, and I can bring that to you at a later date.
Yes.
At this time, what I'd like to do is bring to the board for your consideration, because this is just so recent and such new business, is that we would, we have actually spoken to a well-known attorney in town, Rusty Castleberry, which I think most of you know, is a long-practicing attorney. He has agreed to serve the district, serve the board on an interim basis for the next three to six months, however long it takes to do that. And then if you vote to approve that recommendation...
Madam Chairman, I would move that we move forward with Mr. Castleberry on an interim basis and allow the school superintendent to meet with him and formulate a contract for our approval.
Yes, sir.
I'll second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Phil Leary that the board accepts the recommendation of the superintendent to bring onboard Mr. Rustic, Rusty Castleberry until the superintendent and those concerned have the opportunity to formulate a contract and to do search for someone to step in. And it was seconded by Mrs. Linda Wagner. All right, we're open for discussion.
I'd like to just say that Russ is a, he's a local guy, grew up here. We graduated from high school together. So I can't tell stories on him because he can tell stories on me, but he was a corporate, he was a corporate attorney in Jacksonville for many years, and then came back and settled in Putnam and took over as the attorney for the county commission for years and retired. And he would do an excellent job. So I'd be glad to see him.
Okay, all right. Are we ready to vote? All in favor? Let it be known by aye. Aye. Motion carries. Six, two, five, zero. Okay? Thank you, Mrs. Superintendent. All right, at this time, we're ready for Mrs. Jen Azula. If you will come and share with us social studies and science adoption and the process. We're ready.
I'm excited to be here today to talk to you about instructional materials. And so today, we're going to give you an overview. We have a lot on the horizon, and it's going to come upon us very quickly. So today, my intent is to just inform you of some of the important dates, some of the important pieces of the process for you to be thinking about, as we this year, for the first time ever, attempt to adopt for two subject areas in one year. And so this is the social studies and science adoption process overview for PCSD. We're going to start with social studies, and to get us there, I just want to give you a really quick sense of where we've been. So over the last three years, I have had the extreme privilege of getting to work with so many of our teachers and community members, so many of our leaders around the adoptions for both K-12 ELA and K-12 math. And those of you who've been in the district for a little while, you probably remember, or if you watched the news, you remember, some of the challenges associated with the most recent math adoption. Coming out of those challenges, we opted to postpone our adoption of social studies for one year. And so I'm going to talk to you a little bit about what has been gained, as well as some of the challenges associated with that delay, hoping that by the end of it, you will see that it has been an advantageous pause for our district for a number of reasons. So I shared with you already that we have adopted already for K-12 ELA and K-12 math. And these new curriculums in both of those subjects, the great thing about those, both those pieces, is that they both align to our district-wide, high-leverage practices that we support and emphasize in our classrooms. The other important thing to note is that we did adopt brand-new standards in the state for both ELA and math over the last few years. So it was very important that we have materials in our classrooms for our teachers that are aligned to those new best standards, new ELA expectations, and new mathematical thinking and reasoning processes. Now we're at social studies, and several of you probably know, most of you probably know, that the state has been in the process of adopting new civics and government standards for a little bit of time now, right? Extending into this year, which is exciting, right? But it also means that our previously-used materials are now not in alignment with the brand-new standards. So we're very excited to announce the start of our process and to share with you some of our district ways of work around this. So I first want to introduce our district adoption team. There are four of us on the team, myself, Carrie Paul, who's with us today, Adam Azula, and Laura Shetel. And between these four district-level team members, we have three civic seal of excellence among us, which is pretty great, if you participated in that or heard anything about that. That was a pretty rigorous process to obtain. We all are also all reading endorsed, with some content literacy expertise in there as well. And between the four of us, we have taught pre-K through 12th grade, so representing all of the different grade bands. But let's move to the most important pieces and people involved in this process, because it isn't us. So the first thing to know is that with this adoption process, I shared with you already that the state has been in the process of adopting new standards. I mentioned the civics and government standards because those are the biggest bank of new standards, meaning they touch the most teachers and the most students because they are K through 12. But we have also, through the state, have adopted new standards for both African-American history as well as Holocaust education. In addition to that, it's important to note that while the adoption year for social studies was last year, you'll notice the date at the bottom of the slide. The state's final approved list of materials was just released a little over a month ago. So October 25th, 2023, is when we received the most up-to-date, all-inclusive list of what was approved by FDOE. So let's talk a little bit about the impacts of the delay. I'm sure your wheels are already turning about some of what this may mean for us, or the pause may have meant for us. It's important for you to know that DOE has two, on top of many others, or two that we'll address, two big responsibilities in the adoption process for the state. The first is that they help ensure that all materials brought forth for bid at the state level completely align to each of the standards, benchmarks, and clarifications, including an applicable course description to be deemed acceptable for adoption. Thinking through that, you can probably already see with the timeline why it would have been very challenging for us to go ahead and adopt in the last school year, because the standards weren't completely adopted at that time. The other really important responsibility of DOE is that they pull together a team of experts to thoroughly evaluate and ensure that content in the materials are accurate, appropriately rigorous, and comprehensive in their coverage of each of the standards, benchmarks, and clarifications. Again, back to what I said a moment ago, because so many of those standards were not in place yet, some of the publishing companies, as they submitted their first iterations of their products, the products did not contain all of the required pieces. So let's talk about some goodness associated with that. Because we opted to pause and wait for this year to begin our adoption, our district gets the benefit of receiving for all the final approved curriculum for social studies, a rubric score that is on a zero-to-five scoring range, and it does, their state rubric scores for areas: content of the books and materials, the presentation, the learning, as well as the alignment to the Next Generation Sunshine State standards, and the new standards that were just adopted. Because we opted to delay, we have the benefit of, on that FDOE list of approved resources, we get to see that rubric score ahead of giving the products to our reviewers. And when you keep in mind that our reviewers are educators who are also leading classrooms, they have a lot on their plate. So to be able to receive a rubric score, along with all the evidence for that rubric score from the state, is a great advantage for our folks. The other thing that's important to know is because we delayed, we also get the benefit of a standards alignment score, which was just released alongside of all of the state-approved materials. That standards alignment score allows our teachers and our reviewers, at a glance, to get a sense of how much superfluous or missing content may be in these materials. And if you have ever served in a social studies or science classroom, you probably know that it is not unusual to find materials that are really excessive in the amounts of information contained, meaning they go beyond standards and benchmarks oftentimes. So having that percentage, that standards percentage score, is really beneficial to our reviewers. So now let's talk a little bit about our reviewers and who they are and what they will be doing. So our PCSD reviewers and our selection committee is made up of a combination of coaches, teachers, as well as parents and community members. These folks will be reviewing and then eventually participating in a publicly noticed meeting where we eliminate some of the selections, and then come up with a list of selection recommendations for all of you that we will bring back to the board for consideration and eventually for a vote. Let's take a look at the criteria for these folks. When we started this process, we know that we have a wonderful workforce, especially in our classrooms, that's filled with both experienced as well as brand-new-to-teaching teachers. We have a nice variety of those who are content experts and a nice variety of those who went to a college of education. So it was important to us to have some criteria as we invited our admin teams to nominate people to serve on the selection committee, and this was our criteria. We asked that they have three or more years teaching or supporting in a specific course or subject area, that they were highly effective or effective in their student data, and that they were highly effective or effective in instructional practice. Some of their responsibilities include things like attending professional learning on how to review and what to look for, as well as getting access to digital and, in some cases, print resources. This year, to be fully transparent, it's been a little challenging to get all of the print resources because so many of our textbooks on that approved list were making adjustments up until that October date. So for some companies who are still making their last tweaks and adjustments, they have not sent us print materials yet. However, the great thing is, in this technologically-inclined society, we have all of the digital resources at our fingertips. In addition to looking at the digital materials, all of our reviewers had an opportunity to sit through publisher presentations around the different curriculums, and had an opportunity to ask questions and get those questions answered in those virtual presentations. And those who were unable to attend, so that we could serve everyone's need, we also recorded those publisher presentations. So if you have any desire, I am happy to share those with you all as well, but we have those recorded for them as well, so that they could go back to them, or those that weren't able to attend virtually in the moment because of other duties, they could watch them at their discretion. Finally, the last bit of this process is, once they score these curriculums using a Google form that includes part of the state rubric, they will meet together in a publicly noticed elimination and selection recommendation meeting. That is publicly noticed so that everyone in the community who has a desire can be a part. Come here, come get a sense of what is that committee about, what are we looking at in terms of quality curriculum, et cetera. So who are our incredible reviewers? I'm going to show you just a few of these names here quickly. These are our wonderful K-through-two reviewers. You'll notice every school is represented. We also have a bank of wonderful third-through-fifth grade reviewers for social studies, again, representing our elementary schools. And finally, these are our secondary reviewers for each of the different subject areas. In addition to that, I mentioned parents. It's important to know that when we meet as an elimination and selection recommendation committee, we have asked each school to nominate certain parents who might be interested or want to participate in this, in this committee. So we are looking at, when all is said and done, when we have our elimination and selection committee, we are looking for a minimum of these folks to attend that publicly noticed meeting. We know, we've already heard from some of our reviewers, they've said, Jen, I don't mind scoring all day long, but if you want me to speak in front of other adults, that's a different kind of proposition, right? And so we want to honor that. Not everyone feels super comfortable talking in front of everyone. We feel more comfortable with little people. So what we've asked is that we have a minimum of at least three of those K-through-second grade reviewers, and we hope to have more than that, at least three of the third-through-fifth grade reviewers, six of the secondary-level reviewers, two of our district reviewers, and at least two parent committee members when we have that meeting, to participate in thinking through the elimination as well as the selection recommendations, keeping in mind that they will use all of the data collected in our Google form to make that decision. So it's based on the evidence that those expert reviewers have provided, that those publishers have provided, and what is actually in the curriculum that will help make the So what do these wonderful reviewers get for all of their time and their hard work? Because I never want to downplay that. Our teachers have so many responsibilities, and they are so involved in our district. So it was really important to us to make some, at least some in-service points available to them. So if they attend and they review, as well as attend that selection and that elimination and selection recommendation committee, they'll be eligible for up to 30 in-service points towards their recertification. We wish it was more, but we're very happy that we can offer that. So let's talk timeline for social studies. And I want to go through just a few of these pieces, because you're going to notice when we get to science, some of these are a little different, as well as some of our process. So in social studies, you'll notice in the presentation, we have a ton of dates here for you. The most important dates for you to remember is that on July 8th, I mean, I'm sorry, January 8th, I've skipped us forward to summer, on January 8th, we will meet with the committee in a publicly noticed meeting in this room in the afternoon to go through the elimination and selection recommendation part of the meeting. On January 16th, we're going to come back before you with all of their selection recommendations. Our goal this time, because we learned some valuable lessons from other districts and from the math adoption, so our goal this time is to leave the selection committee meeting with a Plan A and a Plan B option. The Plan A option, the intent would be that that would be a district-wide implementation and purchase, that we would support all of our teachers throughout the district in using that curriculum for that course. Plan B is only to be used in the case of a publishing company actually is no longer, which if you look at the social studies list, we have a number of small, new startup publishers on that list. So we felt like it was important to kind of plan for just-in-case scenarios. And not only that, but sometimes publishers cannot live up to all of the agreements and promises made in an adoption. So we wanted to have another Plan B, just in case of that. And finally, as with math, you may know, that some of our specific course materials, we were not able to get because of backorder, because of all the revisions, until well into the first semester when we adopted for math. We want to help ensure that our teachers in every subject area don't have to have those challenges again. So if we come to a situation where certain products are backordered too far, we again have another plan, just in case. Other important dates to remember are February 13th. That's when we will present to you and have you vote on those selections. Now, something important happens in between time. So when you vote on February 13th, that is not final. That marks a 30-day contestant window, and it's important to note that also, between January 16th- and purchase, that we would support all of our teachers throughout the district in using that curriculum for that course. Plan B is only to be used in the case of a publishing company actually is no longer, which if you look at the social studies list, we have a number of small new startup publishers on that list. So we felt like it was important to kind of plan for just-in-case scenarios. And not only that, but sometimes publishers cannot live up to all of the agreements and promises made in an adoption. So we wanted to have another Plan B just in case of that. And finally, as with math, you may know that some of our specific course materials, we were not able to get because of backorder, because of all the revisions until well into the first semester when we adopted for math. We want to help ensure that our teachers in every subject area don't have to have those challenges again. So if we come to a situation where certain products are backordered too far, we again have another plan just in case. Other important dates to remember are February 13th. That's when we will present to you and have you vote on those selections. Now, something important happens in between time. So when you vote on February 13th, that is not final. That marks a 30-day contestant window. And it's important to note that also between January 16th, when we present our selections to you, we also have a 20-day community feedback window. So there are all kinds of pieces of this process that are mandated by the state to ensure that our stakeholders who want to give input have opportunity to give input, both in the elimination and the selection recommendations, as well as after we've presented to you, they'll have a feedback opportunity where they will have a survey on our website. And then, once that 30-day contestant period opens, after you voted, if we have no one contest, then on the 19th of March, we will present to you our purchase plan and we will move forward with planning for that purchase and implementation. If we have some folks who contest, on March 18th, we will have a public hearing in which we will have to determine if the contestant, if we are gonna move forward or if we're gonna start again from scratch with the adoption process. So that's important to know. When we vote and we present it to you on the 13th, it's not final until that 30-day window is finished. And if we don't have any contestants, we can be finished and present to you the plan on the 19th, but if we have contestants, we're holding that 18th for a public meeting or hearing.
Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
But so the contestants would be contesting the actual curriculum or are they contesting the contract for purchasing?
The actual adoption of the curriculum.
Okay.
Yep.
Where is, in the process, is there any DOE review?
So for social studies, we are fortunate because we delayed, we already have all of DOE's review notes, all of their scoring, the alignment score, the rubric score. We also have access to every document that was submitted to DOE for that initial bid.
Okay.
When we start talking science, you may understand more why we opted to delay social studies. Because with science, because this is their appropriated year to adopt science, we will not have the benefit of the rubric score or the standards alignment score, which means that our reviewers will have to do that part.
But everything we're looking at is already state-adopted?
For social studies, yes.
Social studies, that's what I mean.
Yes.
And it's really, I've never seen it quite this detailed, but I know that the environment we're in, people think there's hidden messages in all curriculum. So I know what you're dealing with, and it's a shame, but that's the state that we're in, in America.
We recognize Mrs. Leary.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
That's okay.
So every morning, I start my day by reading the press clips, mainly the ones that do with education and filed legislation for this upcoming session. And I remember something, and I can't specifically tell you, but that there is legislation on civics that's gonna require that to be a course that has to be completed prior to graduation, correct?
Yes.
So civics and social studies, they're separating, right? Or are they combining?
So social studies is the larger umbrella, civics is one of the courses underneath there. Yes. We have a variety of others, psychology, economics.
And again, the press clips are just a synopsis of the legislation. So it really wouldn't affect this because it's gonna be in place once we adopt it and get the curriculum in place and it'll be taught, and that those juniors or seniors will just have to make sure they take that civics class under the social studies umbrella, correct?
Right. Currently, at the high school level, you have the civics literacy exam that students take. It's not, we don't look at that score in the same way we do civics, biology, algebra, et cetera. It helps for that college requirement. If you've passed it in high school, it kind of makes me think of the old foreign language requirement. If you took the two years of a foreign language at the high school when you went to college, you didn't have to retake those two years. It's the same thing with the civic literacy assessment that they take in high school. If they pass that civic literacy assessment in high school, then they don't necessarily have to take the course when they go to college. It is now a college requirement in the state of Florida to pass that class, but if you have the test score already, then it's like you're out of that expectation.
Okay.
Phil, I've never mentioned this in a board meeting, but I'm gonna go ahead. Some years ago, I sent Governor DeSantis a letter as a former Americanism versus Communism teacher, when I started in, out of college, about civics instruction in the state of Florida. And I've got a copy of the letter somewhere, but anyway, to put back in, you know, rigorous explanations between our system and, you know, Americanism versus Communism, like we used to, I was a teacher. And he has done that, so I will be looking at that. He announced, once he approved it, he announced it on one of the, I guess, the Dan Bongino Show or some, something on, on one of the news stations. But anyway, Rick knows about it. I sent a letter, but I didn't have the rest of the board members sign it or their stationery because I didn't want to drag, I didn't think people would feel comfortable, but that was just me personally. But this is all contingent on national standards and things that we're dealing with right now, but I'm looking forward to see what they've come up with, so I'll be quiet now.
Well, you are wonderful, because I just realized that restarted while I was paying close attention to what you all were talking about. I apologize for that. Great questions, though. There's a lot to this, so I appreciate all of the questions. I am very much learning, too. It's important to know that our adoption processes have changed over the last few years. I've been involved in adoptions for years in the state of Florida, both in this district as well as during my time at NIFEC, but I've never quite been in one that is as open, as wonderfully public, as all-encompassing of so many stakeholders as this one. So it's very much a learning process for all of us. And again, I never want to miss an opportunity to thank our incredible teachers, because as you saw by those lists, we have a number of people representing every school who have been so willing to take on this task with us to ensure that our kids and our teachers have the most quality curriculum possible in social studies. And so we're super excited about that, and I just want to recognize that one more time. While this restarts, and I'm gonna hope it gets ready here soon, but if not, I'm just gonna talk, and we'll go through it that way. So let's talk a little bit about science. As I shared, social studies and science, the processes are slightly different, because this year, moving into science, it is the year of the science adoption. And it's important to know that the way that the state lays out the adoption process, we don't typically get the final approved list with all of the details until our adoption processes are over. We've provided lots of feedback on that over the years, but it just is the way of the state's process. So like I shared, with science, we don't have the benefit of the rubric score, we don't have the benefit of the standards alignment score. So our teachers who get selected for the science committee, they have an even bigger task in front of them, they and our district team, because they will not only have to rate and provide feedback on those other indicators, but they're gonna have to look for that standards alignment and those rubric areas as well, which means that they have a pretty important, but time-consuming task in front of them. And we're excited to see who our schools nominate for that, because I know they were so discerning in thinking through who has the bandwidth and the expertise to represent our school for social studies, so I have no doubt it will be the same for science. So, yes.
So will there, there will be parallel tracks for social studies and science?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. The science timeline is a little later. We got social studies up and running, got all of our reviewers identified, we've trained them, we got all the curriculum in and gave them all of those pieces, and now we're just starting science. We just reached out to our elementary principals this week, this last week, to ask them for their nominees with criteria. We will do the same thing for secondary this week. By the end of the week, they'll have their nomination letter so that they can submit their folks. But the important thing to know about science is, we won't have the final list from the state until we are finished with our adoption process.
And it's no way we could get a delay like we did with the social studies we're in?
So that's a great question, and we can always consider that. I will say, the state gives you two years. They give you the year in which it starts, and you have one additional year to adopt and it be considered in cycle. So we could opt to delay. I will tell you.
But if your team says no.
I've got a lot of feedback from our teachers who teach science currently, and they very much are looking forward to and would like materials that are more aligned, which I have to appreciate. So I know it puts a lot of work on several of us, but it's for the good of our classrooms, for our kids and our teachers, and it's what they've overwhelmingly let us know loud and clear that they would like. So we're gonna do it. We're gonna try it unless we have a reason moving through. Once we get into materials, if something comes up, something happens, if we see a lot of concern, I will absolutely bring that back to the board as our teachers dig in. So if we decide, if you all decide and we decide together that we need to delay, we can do that. But just being fully transparent, as of right now, they are advocating that they would like new materials.
The board recognizes Mr. Leary.
Jen, the science isn't as politically volatile as the social studies, so I wouldn't expect that y'all are expecting a lot of problem with that, as I see it, from DOE or the legislature doing something crazy.
I'm hoping not, and I'm hoping not for social studies as well. I mean, I feel like we are, and feelings don't really mean anything, but I'm hopeful that because we've delayed, that folks will see that we really are trying to be very responsive to the needs of our teachers and our students. And I don't want to downplay that the delay has not caused challenges in social studies as well, because it has. Anytime you delay and you're working with materials that are out of alignment, it can be very frustrating for teachers, and it increases the amount of work they have to do for planning. There is no doubt about that. So I do not want to downplay that piece of it at all. We are very fortunate in our district that we have wonderful instructional staff who have been willing to share their good, the bad, and the ugly, we say, in learning communities every step of the way. And we get it, believe me, they give me the good just as much as they give me the ugly, and I'm happy to have it because it helps us make better decisions and move in a way that best supports them, and that's really important to us. So I'm hoping with both of these, that we can be transparent enough and get the right people at the table really looking and putting their expertise in this process, that we won't have issues one way or another, but you just, you just do not ever know, so.
And will there be any training coming down for the teachers as they?
Yes, ma'am. In fact, that's why we're so anxious to get this done in a timely manner. With the science timeline, it looks like, just a few key dates, our committee meeting, the publicly noticed committee meeting, won't happen until February 12th for science. We're looking at the 13th for the board presentation and the opening of the 20-day feedback window. We're looking at March 19th for the board vote on science, and then that will open the 30-day contest period, with May 6th being the hearing if necessary, and May 7th being our implementation plan to you all, outlining the purchase, the costs associated with that, et cetera. So we are anxious to get both science and social studies materials here as soon as possible, because what we will do is the same, similar to what we did for ELA and math, we'll pull teachers together as we end the year after testing, we'll pull them together in the summer as we're able to, so that they get the time and attention and really collaboration digging into those new materials, so that again, they can feel comfortable and confident with those materials as well. So yes, ma'am, you know it, I'm all over the professional learning side, because I think too often, we expect magic to happen, and we've got to give our people the support and tools and time to be able to make the magic happen, so.
We've been doing this for a long time. I think we'll get through this one as well.
I certainly hope so. And just in case you are curious, I'm gonna do my best to read this, I'm gonna remove these glasses so that I can do my best here. This year is science, next year is CTE, for those of you who are just wondering, and next year is the state's opening for the CTE adoption, the following year is English Language Arts again, and then we have mathematics, and then social studies is back around. So we work on a five-year cycle with each of these subjects in the adoption process.
Yes, ma'am.
I think you've done an outstanding job.
Thank you so much. Thank you, I appreciate that, and I appreciate all the questions. And if you have a desire to see any of these resources, please reach out to Carrie or I. We are happy to give you access to things so that you can see, too, what are our teachers looking at and considering. All right. I think we're, I think we're done, unless you need to see the visuals. All right, perfect, perfect. Thank you so much.
Whatever you, whatever we look at, even if it's state-adopted, somebody's gonna complain. I mean, it's just, you never know.
You're trying to say that's the nature of the beast.
But I think we'll get through it, we always have, we'll figure it out.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I think we had a gentleman that wanted to make a public comment but did not have an opportunity to fill out a form, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay.
And I'll just put it back to you if you'd like to entertain me.
And I'm sorry about that. I do not know all that.
That's okay.
Okay.
No, you're good.
Well, you're in good company. We're gonna wait and work with you and allow you to come and share. Okay.
And I have my daughter here, Allison, say hello. Y'all might recognize her from last summer. She won the 2nd grade Aquila.
2nd grade!
Fifth grade Aquila.
Oh, great.
Uh, contest, but anyways.
You can go ahead and let him speak, and he can fill that out.
Yeah. I wish he was doing 2nd grade.
And your name, sir?
Sean.
Mr. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Pitts, why don't you come on up? Okay. When you get that filled out, just come on up.
He has attended some of our meetings in the past, I remember. Yeah, I found that letter, Phil. I've never told anybody about it, but I did send it to the governor and copied it to Keith Perry and Kat Kamik and Bobby Payne, but I mean, it was pretty neat.
DeSantis did a good job with it.
Did he respond?
Yeah, really.
Now the computer says 30%.
We just give him right, right?
I'll try to go as quick as I can, I'm sorry, I have a hard time getting around.
Okay.
I have.
Be careful.
And Mr. Pitts, as a rule of thumb, when you come up, you will introduce yourself, give your address, and we generally give three minutes. Do you think you would be able to operate with those three minutes?
I should, I should be.
If not.
How you doing?
We'll work with you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Okay, yes, I have noticed a problem within these schools, and it's not just my daughter's school. She could stand up and tell you a little bit, but that'd take too long, you know how kids are. Anyways, children are being allowed to harass one another in these schools. My daughter comes to home on several occasions, dad, this happened, dad, that happened, and it's been going on for a while now. One, for instance, was last year, and they kept saying she was not being picked on, and then the little boy gets on my TikTok and starts making nasty comments to her. Okay, now this year, it is a teacher's grandchild started trouble with her at the end of last year, and it's went on to this year as well. I mean, I have told my daughter, leave the boy alone. I have requested for the little boy to leave my daughter alone, requested for them to be separated, not be allowed around each other, but it won't quit. Now they have my daughter in ESE classes, and she's too smart for that. She is a smart girl, but in the right, the right studying environment, she can excel. She is, she is making progress, catching up, being in the ESE, and I am very proud of her for that. She is trying, but upon going in ESE, it's just another kid from the same grade, you know, started in on ESE class. Tell them what the boy did to you last week, Ally.
Push me down.
And?
I don't remember.
Stole a cookie from you, which you had a very hard time with, and this picking is getting out of hand. I'm not saying she's an angel, she is not an angel, but I mean, there was. I'm not saying she's an angel, she is not an angel, but I mean, there was, for instance, caught on video camera in the lunchroom, she told me, the little boy says, I'm gonna bring brass knuckles to school, threatening to bring a weapon to school to beat her up. Okay? Well, he, him and his father told the vice principal that she said that about him. My daughter didn't know what brass knuckles was, so I know that's not true. Okay? So I'm just saying, the stuff between the schools, school kids needs to stop. And there was video camera from the school that showed the little boy in question harassing my daughter in the lunchroom, threatening her, and actually took steps towards her to fight her. She says ran at her, but you know, that's lingo these days. He ran up on me, okay? But took steps up towards her to bow his fist up. This is the same boy that she made, kinda made a stupid statement, I'm not calling him stupid, hon, but what was your statement one day when he was harassing you?
I said I would kill him just to get him to leave me alone, and then that got me put in a blue book bag, and he's not in a blue book bag.
And I'm just trying, I've been trying to, been trying to talk with the school, we've talked with law, law's talked with her, I'm at a loss, there needs to be more efforts put in place between these kids. I kinda liked the COVID days, stay six feet apart.
I don't blame you.
But this school, this school stuff needs to stop.
Let's see if we could get Mr. Hedstrom maybe to.
I've talked to him, he called me, asked me if, before I talked to y'all, if me and him can settle some things, and I said, I've talked with you, I've talked with Mr. Stevens, I won't talk with the school board, but about my daughter being in a clear book bag, both the boys that made statements about her, both of them has proved, they are not afraid of my daughter, because after them two statements she made, trying to get them to leave her alone, they proved they're not scared of her. They was acting like they're scared of her so bad that they're scared she gonna bring a weapon to school, and then neither one of them would leave her alone.
Which school is this?
Aquaella Elementary.
Okay.
Aquaella Elementary.
Superintendent, why don't we have your staff look into this?
Yeah, absolutely.
And give a report back to the board.
I'd be glad to do that, and actually, either Ms. Drew or.
Me and Ms. Drew, me and Ms. Drew watched a video.
Okay.
In question from that, from that cafeteria.
But Ms. Drew, if you could just maybe schedule a time, if he wants to come in and we could meet, and if you could debrief us, then we can report back to the board on what our actions are.
Yeah, Mr. Pitts has been at several meetings before, and this is the first time he really came up and spoke, but.
Yes, sir. I know you from outside of the school district.
I know, I know. But the superintendent, we direct the superintendent.
And Cerencey, I met you a few times too.
Yeah, but he will, he will, he will get on this and try to get this thing straightened out.
Yes, yes. I mean, I'm not counting it out with the faculty, but Ms. Leary, she is a great principal. I mean, I really appreciate the tremendous job she does at the school, she tries her hardest. But when it comes to the discipline of these children, I mean, you know, some parents do not try to discipline. Ally, do I try to discipline?
Yes.
What do you usually get?
Get a woman to have to clean all that.
Yeah, and I understand they used to make children clean up the schools and such as that, as discipline for in-school behaviors. I mean, but one of the problems is, is these children, one of them, his grandmother works at the school.
All right, Mr. Pitts, we're certainly going to.
Yes, ma'am.
Assist you in getting this resolved.
I appreciate it.
How they're gonna do it, I trust them.
I trust them too.
Make sure we have your phone number so that they can call you with the follow-up and let you know whatever else needs to be done.
Ms. Drew, can you meet with him and just set up something where maybe we can all meet? Thank you.
Thank you again, Mr. Pitts.
Have a good one.
All right.
All right, bud.
Ally, we hope you have a great day tomorrow at school.
Ma'am, she is behaviorally challenged, she's clinically diagnosed, and for this to go on within the school, it's not good on her. She has done two threats on her life.
Yes, all right, we'll do what we can to assist you, all righty. Mrs. Drew is waiting for you, she's gonna, she's gonna set up something with you. Yes, sir. Thank you again.
Don't leave your pen, young lady. Oh, that's your pen? Okay.
Andrew back her pen, all right.
You'll make sure that gets in the minutes.
Yeah, you got it in a minute.
Mrs. Michael, you'll make sure that gets in the minutes. All right, thank you so much. All right, we've taken care of that. All right, at this time, we are ready for our report. Mr. Leary, we're gonna start with you because we started with Mrs. Pickens for the concerned agenda.
Well, thank you, Madam Chairman, and after spending last week with you and Ms. Pickens and Ms. Wagner at the conference, and then our football awards last night, and the board meeting today, I think we've talked about everything. No, just kidding. I do wanna compliment the, there were over 100 students at the FFA sub-district competition today that was held at Francis Baptist Church, and if you ever want to have and see what our youth is all about, go attend one of those FFA competitions or one of their meetings. It is just heartwarming what those kids can do. And I appreciate both Dr. Cerencey and Coach McCool talking about our football team 50 years ago that was first Palaca team to reach the semifinals of the state playoffs, and the awards last night, I mean, what a poignant point that Coach McCool made, that those awards, those kids will look at those for the rest of their life and realize that there's nothing they can't accomplish. The legislature, I've really been trying to keep up with things, all I can say is, Lord help us. The, well, I wouldn't say that, it's just, they were all about deregulation, which we all support, and we think it's definitely the right way to go, and then now they kinda think, well, maybe we need to put something, you know, some other regulations in, so like the legislature always does, you never know until that 60-day session ends and they sign and die. The last thing, and Dr. Cerencey just, if, on a monthly basis, could we just get just a very short synopsis of the progress of the construction of the three schools? I have people, you know, call me and ask me or talk to me about things, and I said, well, everything's moving along very well and we're right on schedule.
Would you like a report or just?
Well, it doesn't have to be a report, just, you know, just a couple sentences about, you know, here's where we are.
Yeah, I can do that.
And then that way, all of us will have that if we get a call.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Bowen can, you know, provide that for me.
I know, I know he's got a big, a lot on his plate.
Yeah, yeah, we can do that.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome, sir. Thank you, Ms. Leary. Mrs. Wagner?
Well, I definitely did enjoy several of the recent celebrations in the different towns and the parades, they're just all over, and they're just, every one of them is so special. We enjoyed Crescent Cities, we even let Mr. Leary drive the truck.
He did a good job.
And then there was the Mary Melrose, the daytime parade this past week, where our own Dr. Cerencey was the grand marshal, and we've, the second Melrose Parade, just a reminder for those who don't know, is this coming Saturday, that's the evening parade, and we're looking forward to that as well. I did wanna say, as far as the FSBA conference, I know those of you who have been on the board forever and ever, you know, it's kind of a, just a yearly thing, but I really do wanna say thank you to the district for allowing us to go there, the networking, the seminars they give, that you can go to different sessions on different topics, they let you know what the cutting-edge topics are, what's going on in other districts, and particularly this year, some of the ones I went to gave us information on things to look at within our district to be proactive and not end up having some of the problems other districts have faced. So I enjoyed many of those seminars, and it's just a great place to talk, they give you plenty of networking and socializing time to really get to know, and just as a new board member, it's very helpful. It's nice to talk to other board members in different districts and realize what we may be up against coming up, or things, we don't have that problem, and a lot of times that's my reaction is, you know, we're already on top of it, or we don't have that problem in Putnam County. And then just, you know, just a reminder everyone, this, you know, it's the Christmas season, and to be careful driving and in all the enjoying of the season, you know, try to remember, especially with our students, remember those that aren't as fortunate and maybe don't have all the items on the Christmas tree, under the Christmas tree, and just keep those people in your prayers as well, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Wagner. Mr. Buckles?
I was pleased to see Sharon Harris here today, and I think of your mother and how proud she would be of you. She served our kids for a lot of years in Putnam County as a health nurse. But I feel pretty good, I talked with the superintendent, we've got a lot of stuff going on, you're gonna, you could, you could have the number-one school district in America, and you'd have people trying to find, cherry pick something that's not as good, and you're just gonna have to live with that from time to time, but I listened to our kids getting awards today, you know, we've got schools for kids, mostly the kids that come to enroll in kindergarten, can't even speak English. So, you know, we've got, we've got a wonderful group of employees and teachers working with a lot of wonderful young people, and I'm so proud to see the ones that came today and got the awards, and it just makes you know how much is going on behind the scenes. But with that, everybody have a Merry Christmas and a wonderful New Year, and looking forward to being with family and friends, and that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Buckles. Mrs. Pickens?
Okay, I also wanna congratulate Sharon Harris. My favorite memory of probably any graduation since I've been a board member was a Palaca High School graduation and watching her jump and give high fives to the graduates when they came off the field, and I thought, wow, that's just so much enthusiasm. I know kids feed off that, and it goes into other classes, so thank you for all you've done. And like Mr. Leary said, the All-County Football Banquet was wonderful last night. Twenty-four fine young men were awarded last night, and the Player of the Year was from Crescent City, Lentavious Keenan.
My cousin.
Related to Ms. Gillyard, therefore, you know? But I also wanna congratulate the winners of the James A. Long Spelling Bee. Last year's winner won again, Alyssa Moore, and the runner-up is Kaya Salinas. And I enjoyed the FSBA conference a lot, and really good breakout sessions, but two of the speakers kinda stuck in my head. The first was John Gordon, and one thing he said was, being positive doesn't just make you better, it makes everyone around you better. And that's sort of my motto for my whole life, it's just, there's always something positive. I really felt like that coaching, because you do face a lot of adversity and you have to remain positive. And then the second was Adam Lane, and what I thought was really interesting about his is he said that when the students become juniors, he offers them their first job, coming back to work for him, and at their old high school, or in their district, and I thought that was a great thing, something that, you know, I hope that our principals could stand up and offer our children. Sometimes it's just that thought, that little spark that gets you going. I'm looking forward to going to the winter concert at Crescent City, the Band and Chores Conference tomorrow night, and then we have three spelling bees, Middleton, Bernie, Crescent City, and Browning Pierce, and looking forward to Christmas, time with family and friends, and just wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a very Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mrs. Pickens. I'll just jump right there with the All-County banquet as well, the football banquet, and just thanks to the Thebold family, I think Dr. Cerencey did ask how long, they had been doing it, I think like 30-plus years, and it's, they don't have to do that.
Right.
But they cared enough about our young men, and the thing that stood out was their GPA's. These are not just jobs, these are student athletes, and one of the young men from Crescent City owned his own business, already has a business going on, so they're doing something right, we're just tagging along, you know, kinda smiling and getting credit for it. The musical, oh my word, with Mr. Pignotta, just when you think it can't get into that, it gets gooder. I mean, just awesome. And that young man, McClella, oh my word, he was screwed reincarnated, it was just, it was great, so I enjoyed that. The Christmas parades that I was able to participate in, that's great, sorry I could not be there Saturday, part of my church obligation. Want to commend again and congratulate the Reading Center for becoming a Blue Ribbon School recognized, and the coverage that Palaca Daily News gave them, I just thought that was awesome. We did, I think it was Larry Sullivan, I think, when he was principal out at Interlock Elementary, he made that school, well, he was the leader there when they became Blue Ribbon Schools. And for the incubate debate, I didn't get to participate this year, they had it at Bowles on November 18th, but I did get notice that one of our students from QI, Gavin Miles, placed third, and if you've ever witnessed it, hey, getting third place is like first place, I mean, it's intense, they get it done. Final thing I wanna say about the conference we just left, one of the ones that I attended was a late school start in 2026. It's on the horizon, the schools are going to be mandated to start later start times, and I know I'm, because I'm getting an amen over there.
We've been there.
But what that says to me, Putnam County, you all know what to do, it's like you got a crystal ball, we're already there, and they're gonna have to, and three other districts, Sarasota, I think, or some, nobody, the other three, but I felt so good sitting there knowing that we have already been there and done that, and we're sailing, and so regardless of what they might have said in the past, they're looking at us, and I'm just glad to be a part of it. Enough said. Madam Attorney, if you will.
Thank you, Ms. Gillyard, I appreciate that. It's, I'm a little surprised myself that this is the last board attorney report that I'll be presenting from the Douglas Law Firm. I just found out the news myself, and I wanted to just provide a little context for those of you all who are perhaps not aware of the circumstances. It's actually a happy occasion in a sense, not our leaving, but the reason behind it. We recently agreed to have a new attorney come onboard our firm named Ian Pickens, and Mr. Pickens is the child of one of the board members, as you may have guessed, and because he is coming onboard our firm and gonna be a great personal injury attorney, I understand, for our firm, that is why the Douglas Law Firm decided that it would be best to just withdraw from representing the district after over nine years of representing you all, just to avoid any potential issues that could be perceived because of that relationship with this new attorney coming onboard. And we're very, you know, we've enjoyed our time working for you all. Charlie Douglas, the founder of the firm, you know, as you know, he's a product of the Putnam County School District, he's a big proponent of Putnam County, and our firm, you know, which is right across the street, as you're all aware, our office has hired a number of Putnam County school graduates, and we hope to continue doing so in the future and be, continue to be a good community partner for the district. We're very, you know. We're very, you know, sad and regretful that we have to conclude, you know, withdraw from our representation of the district. And, and I, on a personal level, will miss it. I've been here just over a year and a half. And, and I, I will miss working with everybody and seeing you on a regular basis. And hopefully, though I'll still see you all at, at different points in the future. Um, and if you ever all need anything, Charlie said, you know, just reach out, you know? Again, we're right across the street.
If you need any...
And we wanna continue supporting the district in every way we possibly can.
If you need any help teaching Charlie how to read or, or talk coherently, just let us know. Cause he used to, you know, he was, we, we had him serve overtime at the district office years ago.
Oh.
I took care of him.
He handled March of Dimes, he handled March of Dimes when he was a student for us and...
Oh.
Yeah.
I guess obviously he had a lot of charitable endeavors.
He did.
Different pro bono things he's done over the years.
And he can read a little bit.
But he just wanted to express how meaningful it's been to him. You were one of the first firm's first clients, I understand, after it was formed.
Right.
And it, it's a big loss to us that we won't be able to continue representing you.
Carol, thank you for those kind of comments. And, uh, Ms. Pickens, we're proud of both your sons. Yeah.
Products of Putnam.
Products of Putnam.
Products of Putnam, there we go. And, um, thank you for saying y'all are across the street. If we need to borrow a cup of sugar or something, might come over there. Or coffee pods, right, Ms. France? If we need coffee, might come over there and say...
We got, we got a curry.
There you go. That's all you had to say. I'll be very brief. I know we've been here a while, but I just wanna say, um, I was very honored to, uh, visit Jacksonville Thursday, I believe it was Thursday. We went up there and met, you know, STEM two hub is a, is a valuable partner for us. And they've really helped us kinda be on the cutting edge of, uh, STEM and STEM instruction. And, you know, we're, we're looking to be a STEM accredited district, one of the first in Florida. And we really, I'll tell you, we have, uh, many people that are looking at what's happening in this district STEM-wise. As a matter of fact, I actually was on a panel up there and we had, uh, had a group from Central Pennsylvania come all the way down here to find out what Putnam County is doing in STEM. And these were educators and business people. I mean, and they wanted to know what Duval County was doing, but especially Putnam County. And then we also had some representatives from embassies, from European nations that wanted to know what Putnam County was doing. So I, I was very honored to represent Putnam County there. The next day, the group actually came down and visited Crescent City High and QI Roberts Junior Senior High and looked at their STEM programs. So it was really an honor and I, just to be able to share that with other areas. And I'll be honest with you, I think we, they saw some things in our district that really, uh, they may be trying to implement as well. So congratulations to all those folks that work in our STEM program. Uh, Mr. Bowlen and I had the opportunity to go to Tallahassee, what time? It's a week or so ago, and, uh, visit with a number of legislators and representatives from the governor's office, just talking about some funding issues for our construction project in Crescent City. So all those went well and we'll keep you posted on that. I was in Tampa with all of you for the, um, FSBA and FAD's Joint Conference. And I, I think we actually put something on Facebook, or I did, about meeting one of the, uh, presenters there. And I told you this.
Yes.
Was, uh, one of our former students, Lauren Grant, Grant Gifford now. And she is, uh, she presented, she's in Martin County and actually presented to our group, the superintendent's about a program they're doing there. But, uh, she's their Principal of the Year. And she, she grew up and graduated from Palaca High School. And of course, her sister is, is also down in that area too, so.
And her dad was a principal, Doug Grant.
Right, Doug. And their mom Sandy was an educator here. So anyway. Yeah, director, right. So anyway, it just made me real proud that we have our, Putnam County is just covering the world out there, right? And finally, uh, I was very happy to go to the musical too, and, uh, always try to get there. And I think it's like the third time he's done Christmas, Carol. Cause I remember my son, who's in New York now working in Broadway, um, was actually, he'll get on to me for saying this, but he actually was a character, the guy in the chains.
Yes.
Whatever his name is. Um, ghost, you know?
Raveling, yes.
Thank you, Jacob Marley. And that Link by Link, I remember that song. So I shot about five-second video of it and I sent it to him. And of course, he got on to me. He said, Dad, you're not supposed to be videotaping that. So I erased it, Mr. P, so we don't get in trouble. Anyway, it was a great program, great turnout. So back to you.
And you sparked a memory of something I read in the agenda regarding STEM. Uh, they are going to a conference in February in the astronaut.
Astronauts.
Yes, yes, uh, Student Astronaut Association or something like that. I tell you, it just does you proud.
Yeah.
And so, enough said.
Yeah, it really is.
I think we've been here long enough. We love each other, but, but, you know? All right, anything else to come before the board? Anything else? And again, Mrs. Harris, thank you for everything, you and the other two ladies that are retired.
It's been a long, it really has. I loved every minute of it.
Thank you, Sharon.
And if you choose to, you can either come back after a year so all you can sub, so you can walk out.
They changed.
Okay, all right.
No, you still have to wait. You still have to wait a year.
Okay, all right. But you can volunteer, so.
There's a limit on the number of hours.
That, she could volunteer. Okay, okay, see that?
See, Ms. Wagner, if you want.
Yeah. And, and, and to Mr., uh, to Dr. Serency's leadership team, we don't tell you enough how much we appreciate what you do, you know, keeping everything knit and together. Yes, the schools bring it to you, but you have to knit it together. You have to get some things and get them out to them. We thank you for everything. All righty.